Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We shall carry on with our work. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, I declare the 23rd opening of the 45th session of the Human Rights Council open. We are now proceeding to review the final document of the Laos People's Democratic Republic on the basis of the report of the UPR Working Group on the Laos People's Democratic Republic and its addendum. These documents, as well as the information to be presented by the delegation of the Laos People's Democratic Republic, will make up the final document of the review and shall be adopted by a standard decision of the council. It is now my honour to give the floor to His Excellency, Mr Kam In Kichadeth, extraordinary and tenetary ambassador, permanent representative of the Laos People's Democratic Republic to the United Nations Office at Geneva and the other international organisations in Geneva, for him to present additional information on the review.
Thank you, Mr Vice President, excellencies. I will make a statement in two parts. The first part is for the sharing some information and the second part is the conclusion. Laos delegation is pleased to attend the 45th session of the Human Rights Council for the adoption of its third circle UPR outcome report. The Laupedia emphasizes that the UPR process is an international forum for the constructive dialogue and the protection and promotion of human rights. The UPR provides a great opportunity for Laos to highlight its endeavors for the promotion and protection of human rights. After the third circle UPR review in January, on the 10th February 2020, the National Committee of the Human Rights organised a series of workshops, debriefing and consultation with the participants of conservative history and sector, including civil society organisations, and all comments have been taken into consideration by the government. Mr Vice President, I would like to inform the council that the Laupedia supports 160 out of 226 recommendations, notes and partially support 66 recommendations. In summary, the Laupedia supports more than 70% of all recommendations. 160 recommendations are in line with the constitution, the law and the realities of Laos, and they also relate with the Laos prioritized commitment for its next cycle of the implementation of human rights, promotion and protection. Indeed, the number of the supported recommendations have already seen some progress and some notable changes since the last UPR cycle. Some are already being implemented while others supplement in the near future. For the 66 notifications, the Laupedia can partially support while others are inapplicable. Some recommendations that are noted do not mean that we will not implement at all, as some of them are part of our ongoing human rights efforts while the order requires further considerations. Furthermore, there are some recommendations that are incomplete, incompatible with the constitution laws and do not reflect the reality of the country. The detail of the reply to the 226 recommendations along with the explanation have been submitted in a form of the Laupedia addendum to the report of the Working Group on the UPR document number A/ HRC/44/6/1. I am honoured to inform the council of Laos position towards the recommendation as follows. On human rights and all the notifications, Laos has supported the recommendation on considerable rest of notification to ILO Convention Number 189 and domestic workers to advance an international convention on protection of all persons from enforced disappearance. We need more time to study and provide all the necessary conditions to become a party of the Convention on Protection of the Right of migrant workers and their family members, the Rome Statutes of the International Criminal Court. ILO Convention Number 105 and 169, UNESCO Convention 162 and the Second Obstacle Protocol to the International Convention on Serial and Political Rights, an obstacle protocol to the Convention against torture and all the cruel infringement or degrading treatment or punishment. Regarding the recommendation on invitation to the UN Special Reporters, Laupedia reiterate its engagement with the said mechanism shall be based on readiness for both sides. Nevertheless, Laupedia recognise the important roles of the special procedure for the protection and promotion of human rights in accordance with the international law and the UN Charter. In the previous circle, the Laupedia provided good cooperation with the special procedure, including the invitation of a special reporter on the sale of children, child prostitution and child pornography to visit to Laos in 2017, and a special reporter on human rights and stream poverty in 2019. The Laupedia will continue cooperating with the special procedure, including extending country visit invitations on case by case as an appropriate time. With regard to recommendations on the domestic mechanism for promotion and protection of human right, the Laupedia had established the National Committee on Human Rights since 2012, which is known as the overarching the promotion and protection of human right in the Laupedia. And coordination for implementing, reporting and follow-up the UPR recommendations, engagement with relevant mechanisms under the Human Rights Councils and all the treaty bodies, including the Human Rights Committee, the Committee on Economic, Social and Cultural Rights, the Committee on Elimination and Russell Discrimination and the Committee on Against Torture, the National Commission on Advancement of Women and Motor Child, implementing follow-up reporting the SIDO and CRC, and two political conventions on the right of child, the National Committee on Persons with Disabilities and the ADLIS as the mechanism for implementing reporting, following up the convention on persons with disabilities. The current environment of the Laupedia prompts for maintaining of the existing domestic mechanism to continue to strive towards self-strengthening and improvement for the human rights, protection and promotion for the Laos multi-ethnic people. While maintaining good cooperation with the international and regional human rights mechanisms, concerning recommendation on adoption of the comprehensive anti-discrimination registration and gender discrimination. The Laupedia has been making notable progress on anti-discrimination for instance. The constitution explicitly stimulus or prohibit of the discrimination on various bases. Additionally, the Laupedia have adopted specific laws and legislation with the provision on anti-discrimination and against women, comprehensive gender equality promotion and non-discrimination against persons with disabilities, ethnic groups and religion. The penalty code of the Laupedia was adopted and propagated in 2018, described discriminative behaviour as criminal offences. Nonetheless, Laupedia is not ready to support the recommendation number 46 for this cycle. Concerning the right of LGBT, Laos does not restrict or prohibit them from social activities. However, the Laupedia does not support the recommendations which are not in line with the national culture values and morals. For the recommendation on the death penalty and the juror moratorium, Laupedia reinterests that it has implemented the factor moratorium for many years. Moreover, those who have been imposed in the death sentence do get considered based on good behaviour and compliance with regulations to receive commutation of their sentence on special national occasion to reduce the life imprisonment. In 2017, the National Assembly considered the penalty code with the true debate and voted on the death penalty law. And the results was in favour of keeping the death penalty law then it was adopted and propagated in 2018. The perpetuation of the death penalty is consistent with Article 6 of the ICCPR. Therefore, the Laupedia cannot support the recommendation that calls for total abolishment of the juror moratorium of the death penalty. Regarding to the recommendation on the amendment, the registration on the right of freedom of speech, expression, information, the Laupedia cannot support some of those recommendations on removing the few limitations stated in the law on information and other relating registration because those clauses are not restricted to allow multi-ethnic people from expressing their views in the society, but rather those right to freedom of expression should be fully enjoying with a heightened sense of ethics and morality. We align with Article 19 of the ICCPR. Moreover, Laos government has provided facilitation for the Laos multi-ethnic people to enjoy their rights to expression towards social and public administration issue through the various channels in accordance with the law. The Constitution Law on Media, Penal Code and all the related news clearly stimulate the right to freedom of expression of the Laos multi-ethnic people. The provisions are in line with international norms and principles and we noticed some those related to the recommendations. For the recommendation on investigation cases of enforced disappearance, the Laupedia cannot support them at its official investigation order. Must be issued based on credible claim, factual information and evidence. Regarding the recommendation on missing case of Sombath Somphon, I would like to tell the council that the Investigation Committee is a continued investigation with a purpose to bring the perpetrator to a justice. In the Laupedia, all ethnic group are equal before the law without any discrimination. The state respect and protects all religious activities and believers. For that purpose, the government had adopted the decree 315 on illustration and protection of religious activities, which expressly consulted with government officials and religious groups in the Laupedia. Mr Vice President, on this occasion, on behalf of the Laos government, I would like to express my sincere gratitude to all distinguished delegates, international and non-governmental organisations for their very support and assistance to the Laupedia, particularly on human rights protection and promotion. Finally, the Laupedia welcomes further constructive reviews of the views from international community for the UPR adoption of Laupedia today. I thank you, Vice President.
Je vous remercie.
I thank you, Excellency, for your presentation. Before I give the floor to member states and observers for their comments on the outcome of the review, may I inform delegations that the agreed speaking time is 1 minute and 30 seconds for all states. The first speaker shall be Singapore.
Mr Vice President, Singapore commends Laos People's Democratic Republic, Laupedia, for its constructive participation in its third UPR. We note that Laupedia has accepted 160 recommendations, including two from Singapore. We commend Laupedia for consulting widely with relevant stakeholders, including civil society, on all of its received recommendations following its UPR in January. We encourage Laupedia to fully implement its accepted recommendations and to report on the progress made ahead of its next UPR. We welcome the Laupedia's assurance at the adoption of its UPR recommendations in January that it will continue to closely work and cooperate with all human rights mechanisms with a view to improving the promotion and protection of human rights. We note from the addendum to the UPR report that it is the duty of the Laos government to search for missing Laos citizens, including Mr Sombath Somphon, the Laotian spouse of a Singapore citizen. We hope that the Laotian authorities will resolve the case expeditiously and bring about the much needed relief to his family. As a fellow ASEAN member, we wish the Laupedia continued success in improving the lives of all its people and in achieving its goal of graduating from LDC status in 2024. With these comments, Singapore endorses the adoption of the UPR Working Group's report on the Laupedia by the council. Thank you.
Merci.
Thank you. I give the floor to Sri Lanka.
Thank you, Mr Vice President. Sri Lanka commends the government of Laupedia for its constructive engagement during the third cycle of the Universal Periodic Review in January 2020. We acknowledge the strong resolve by the government of Laupedia to develop its human rights system through institutional structures and normative frameworks. We take note of the inclusion in the Amendment Constitution, a stipulation that the state acknowledges, respects, protects and guarantees human rights, including fundamental rights of the citizens in accordance to the law. Sri Lanka welcomes the creation of a legal database in the form of the Laos Law Application, allowing the people to access legal information and encourage in providing their comments to draft laws. We are also pleased to note the efforts by Laupedia to address the issue of children dropping out of schools and implementation of a policy to reduce the child education costs for parents. Sri Lanka recommends the adoption of the third UPR report of Laupedia and wishes the government in success in implementing all of its accepted recommendations. I thank you.
Merci.
Thank you. Thailand, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr Vice President. Thailand welcomes the active participation of the Laupedia in the UPR process. We appreciate the Laupedia's ongoing efforts to promote and protect human rights and to advance SDGs implementation. We also commend its effective COVID-19 response. We welcome the Laupedia's acceptance of 163 UPR recommendations, including Thailand's two recommendations on first, promoting human rights education and training, and second, on incorporating the rights of women, children and persons with disabilities in its National Socioeconomic Development Plan and taking integrated approaches in the SDG's implementation and human rights policies. Thailand encourages the Laupedia to consider conducting voluntary midterm report and maintaining regular dialogues with relevant national stakeholders with a view to keeping the momentum for effective UPR implementation. Thailand endorses the adoption of the UPR Working Group's report on the Laupedia by the council. As a friendly neighbour and a fellow ASEAN member, Thailand wishes the Laupedia all the success in translating accepted UPR recommendations into positive changes on the ground. Thailand stands ready to support and cooperate with the Laupedia in its efforts to implement these accepted recommendations. Thank you.
Merci.
Thank you. United Kingdom, you have the floor.
Mr Vice President, the United Kingdom welcomes the Laos People's Democratic Republic's engagements with the UPR. We commend the Laupedia for its cooperation and engagement with UN treaty bodies and special procedures, as well as its economic development and poverty reduction strategies and work on children's rights, including its very effective response to COVID-19. The UK notes the Laupedia statement that the constitution and relating laws guarantee freedom of expression. However, we remain concerned about restrictions on foreign news agencies and the use of intimidation against critics of the state. We urge the government to promote and protect the right to freedom of expression for all. The UK remains concerned that the case of Sombath Somphon is yet to be resolved and ask that investigations into all enforced disappearances are carried out thoroughly. We welcome Laupedia's support for the UK's recommendations to develop and implement a national action plan on human trafficking and modern slavery and to repeal all legislation inhibiting freedom of expression. However, we regret that Laupedia did not support the UK's recommendation to undertake impartial, thorough and transparent investigations into all enforced disappearances. We remain open to discussing these recommendations with the Laupedia and would welcome further discussion on next steps for implementation. The UK encourages the Laupedia to engage fully with the UN and the international community on their accepted recommendations and to implement them fully. Thank you.
Merci.
Thank you. UNICEF, you have the floor.
Vice President, UNICEF commends the government of Laupedia for its engagement with the UPR and for the acceptance of almost all child rights-related recommendations. We acknowledge the efforts to realise the rights of every child in line with the CRC and SDGs and take note of the important progress made in child well-being. We welcome the acceptance of recommendations to further strengthen national health, education and child protection systems to provide quality services for the most vulnerable children. It is encouraging to know that the government will further ensure the full and effective implementation of the CRC. UNICEF welcomes the decision to continue incorporating the SDG targets into the Ninth National Socioeconomic Development Plan, ensuring that children's rights are well reflected and to work towards enhancing children's access to social services which are aligned with the Laos Generation 2030 commitments. The decisions to further address child trafficking, early marriage and infant mortality and to improve the quality of education demonstrate the strong commitment of the government to improve children's lives and develop human capital. In accepting these recommendations, we see a clear commitment towards reducing multi-dimensional poverty, which is important in a country where 50% of children suffer from three or more deprivation. We regret, however, that the recommendation to develop a comprehensive national strategy on the rights of the child with a specific budget line and monitoring mechanisms was only noted. UNICEF stands ready to continue supporting the government in realising the rights of every child. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt. As the President, I give the first president, I give the floor to Venezuela. Thank you, Mr Vice President. We extend a warm welcome to the distinguished delegation of the People's Democratic Republic of Laos, Laupedia, and thank them for the presentation. We are delighted to see the government of Laos deep commitment to the proportion, protection to human rights and broad cooperation with UPR mechanisms. In a frank and constructive dialogue, we were able to appreciate the efforts made by Laupedia to implement the UPR recommendations accepted. We welcome the poverty reduction in 2018. It was 15.5% in the various districts of the country, which is close to the SDG target. We are delighted to see that the government's policies in education, health and poverty reduction are fitting ones, thanks to which they provide effective protection to families, especially most vulnerable families. We extend a heartfelt congratulations to the government of Laupedia and we wish you every success in the implementation of the accepted UPR recommendations. For these, we recommend the adoption of this report. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. As the Vice President, Vietnam, you have the floor.
Mr Vice President, Vietnam warmly welcome the delegation of the Laos People's Democratic Republic to the final adoption of the UPR outcome and appreciate their constructive engagement with the UPR process. We commend Laos for accepting more than 70% of the recommendations it received at the 35th session of the UPR Working Group this January, including our three recommendations. We thank Laos for accepting our recommendations on poverty reduction and socio-economic development and acknowledge the efforts made by the government of Laos in this regard. We also welcome the commitment of Laos to our recommendation on improving access to affordable medical services and educational opportunities for its people in remote areas. In closing, my delegation urges the council to adopt the final UPR outcome of the Laos People's Democratic Republic by consensus. I thank you, Mr Vice President.
Merci.
Thank you. I give the floor to Belgium.
Mr Vice President, Belgium welcomes the commitment of the Laos People's Democratic Republic during this UPR. My delegation notes with appreciation that Laos accepted the recommendations made by Belgium, in particular to ratify the Convention for the Protection of All Persons from Enforced Disappearance and to ensure that any restrictions to the exercise of the freedom of expression and peaceful assembly comply with the requirements of Articles 19 and 21 of the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights. Belgium is interested to know what concrete measures are envisaged to implement these recommendations and will be attentive to their implementation. Belgium notes, however, that its other recommendation with regard to the ratification of the Second Protocol to the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights aiming at the abolition of the death penalty has not been accepted. Belgium considers that this is an important recommendation and therefore invites the authorities to reconsider their position. Thank you, Mr Vice President.
Merci.
Thank you. Brunei Darussalam, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr Vice President. Brunei Darussalam wishes to thank His Excellency Kichadeth Ambassador and Representative Laupedia for update on his country's progress since its review in January 2020. Brunei Darussalam commends Laupedia's efforts to promote and protect the rights of children to education and welcomes their continuous advances in healthcare for mothers and children in the country. Brunei Darussalam is pleased that Laupedia has accepted 163 recommendations, including the two recommendations from Brunei. This reaffirms Laupedia's continued commitment to the promotion and protection of the human rights of its people and we wish Laupedia success in its implementation efforts. Mr Vice President, Brunei Darussalam in this regard would recommend for the adoption of the Working Group report of the UPR of Laupedia. Thank you.
Merci. China.
Thank you, China.
Thank you, Mr Vice President. The Chinese delegation extends a warm welcome to Laupedia, who has been actively involved in the UPR. China welcomes Laos' efforts to promote economic and social development and to improve the living standards in the country, to reduce poverty, to develop education, health and to guarantee the rights of women, children, people with disabilities and other forms of groups, to promote ethnic harmony in the country. We support Laupedia, which will continue to walk its national human rights path pursuant to its own goals. We welcome the fact you have accepted our recommendations. You will continue to support sustainable development, to reduce poverty, to further develop education so that all children in the country can enjoy compulsory education and to, you'll continue to develop health and strengthen the public health system construction. We will be, we recommend that the council adopt this report. Thank you very much, Mr Vice President. Thank you very much. Cuba, you have the floor.
Gracias, señor.
Thank you, Mr Vice President. Cuba extends a warm welcome to the delegation of Laupedia, commending the country for the significant number of recommendations accepted. We welcome the fact that the recommendations we made have been accepted and supported by the country in this respect. We urge you to continue priority to the actions taken to eliminate poverty and to improve the quality and coverage of your education and health system, particularly in remote areas, so that the living standards of your population can continue to rise. We welcome your commitment to the mechanism and we wish you every success in the implementation of the recommendations accepted during the Universal Periodic Review and we support the adoption of the report by this council. Thank you very much. Thank you very much as the President. The Vice President, I now give the floor to the DPRK.
Thank you, Mr Vice President. DPRK delegation appreciate Laupedia for its sincere and constructive participation through the cycle UPR process. The interactive dialogue with the delegation of Laupedia during the 35th session of the UPR Working Group in January 2020 was a successful opportunity to fully understand Laos' PDR's policy and experience for the promotion and protection of human rights in the country. Particularly, the significant achievements made in the promotion and protection of human rights, including implementation of the 10-year strategic development plan for 2016-2025 draw special attention deserving our commendation. While taking note of the report of the Working Group as well as the additional information provided by the delegation, we welcome Laupedia's acceptance of many of the recommendations, including DPRK's, as a full as a full demonstration of its will to make further efforts in the fields of human rights. My delegation wishes Laos P D R all the best and great success in its future endeavor for promotion and protection of human rights and supports the adoption of U P R outcome on the Laos P D R by Human Rights Council. Thank you.
Merci.
Thank you. Egypt, you have the floor.
謝謝主席欢迎主席
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. My delegation wishes a warm welcome to the delegation of Laos P D R. We thank you for your answers as far as the recommendations are concerned. We also welcome the fact that the delegation has reviewed recent human rights developments in the country. We pay tribute to Laos P D R for the progress made in promoting human rights in general and in particular the fact that you've created the National Commission on Women and Children, the National Commission on People with Disabilities and the elderly, as well as the National Commission on the Rights of People. We encourage Laos P D R to continue to cooperate with the Human Rights Council treaty bodies and special procedures. We wish this country every success as it seeks to promote human rights and we recommend the adoption of the report. Thank you. This is the last speaker we could accommodate, says the Vice President. Speeches that cannot be given because of lack of time will be posted on the Exponent as always. We now move on to the list of speakers from the other stakeholders for their observations on the U P R's outcome for Laos P D R in our connection. May I give the floor to Alliance Defending Freedom? You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. A D F International appreciates the commitment of the Laos People's Democratic Republic to reviewing and amending its decree three fifteen, as well as implementing new mechanisms to streamline administrative procedures and eliminate discrimination of religious minorities by local officials. To the same effect, we commend the government's openness to providing countrywide seminars and trainings on the rights of religious minorities to public officials, police and other key actors. We further welcome the Laos government's willingness to ensure accountability for acts of violence, discrimination and persecution of ethnic and religious minorities, including by strengthening access to justice and the independence of the judiciary. In this regard, we look forward to the establishment of a mechanism for individuals to appeal to a national authority for arrests and decisions enacted by local officials, ensuring that they conform with human rights standards and do not arbitrarily target Christians and other religious minorities. Mr. Vice President, at the outcome of this review cycle, Laos accepted recommendations relating to the protection of refugees and asylum seekers and the thorough investigation of acts of violence committed against them. However, we deeply regret the government's unwillingness to acknowledge the human rights violations suffered in its territory by Humong and Montanyard Christians fleeing from persecution in Vietnam. These include arbitrary arrests, violence and even expulsion. We call upon the Laos government to put into practice its commitments to fully upholding the rights of these vulnerable groups, including respecting the international principle of non-refoulement. Likewise, we regret that the Laos government has rejected calls to amend decree two thirty-eight despite its detrimental impact on the activities of religious groups, both registered and unregistered. In particular, unregistered groups face serious curtailments to their freedom of association as well as numerous reported cases of abuse by local officials. We reiterate the need
Thank you. I understand.
I shall welcome the discussion of human rights in the Laos People's Democratic Republic. We regret the state did not accept recommendations on steps to abolish the death penalty, to ratify all international human rights treaties and protocols, to take specific measures to investigate grave human rights violations, including cases of enforced disappearance and torture in the country, to establish a national human rights commission and to amend legislation to protect peaceful exercise of rights to freedom of expression, assembly and association. Madam President, we note Laos P D R's stated commitment to improving human rights protection. We welcome the undertaking to ratify the Convention for Protection of All Persons from Enforced Disappearance and urge this be done without reservations. We regret that the state has still to implement recommendations it supported at the previous U P R, including on impunity for the enforced disappearance of Sombat Sompho and treaty ratification. We regret Laos P D R did not accept recommendations on investigating the situation of missing Thai pro-democracy activists and Laos political activists feared to have been subjected to enforced disappearances. Madam President, we welcome Laos P D R's undertaking to release those detained solely for exercising their rights to freedom of expression, peaceful assembly and association. Despite the state's assertion at the U P R review that it protects these rights, men and women are still imprisoned and continue to be arbitrarily detained for their peaceful exercise of these rights. This includes individuals who have spoken out online, who have criticized officials or taken part in peaceful assemblies. We also welcome Laos P D R's support for recommendations and observance of international standards on land acquisition and its displacement. Communities displaced by state land acquisition continue to report they were not adequately consulted or compensated and have suffered damage to their livelihoods and to their environment. Thank you.
Merci.
Thank you. Christian solidarity worldwide, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. C S W welcomes Laos' cooperation with the U P R process and acceptance of recommendations relating to the right to freedom of religion or belief. While there have been some improvements in the protection of the right during the reporting period, weak rule of law, ambiguous terms and obstacles to registration undermine F O R B for Laos' religious communities. We welcome the acceptance of recommendations calling for Laos to review and amend decree three one five, but regret that Laos noticed a recommendation allowing all religious communities to meet and conduct activities freely, regardless of registration, citing decree three one five as justification for doing so. Arbitrary, vague and discriminatory practices and procedures pertaining to religious groups must cease. Over the past decade, there has been a reduction in the number of long-term Christian prisoners of conscience. However, in general, improvements to F O R B are mostly restricted to urban areas. In rural areas, efforts to promote and protect F O R B can be undermined by social hostilities and weak rule of law at the local level, thereby restricting the manifestation and practice of minority religions and restricting the ability of citizens to choose and change their religion or belief. Christians in rural areas have reported instances of arbitrary detention, forced eviction, confiscation of land and livestock, destruction of property, harassment and discrimination. In light of these concerns, we welcome Laos' acceptance of recommendations one one five point four eight and one one five point one one eight and further call on the government to immediately and unconditionally release anyone detained in connection with the peaceful practice and observance of their religion or belief. Both state and non-state perpetrators of violations must be brought to justice. Laos' acceptance of a recommendation calling for guarantees to freedom of expression, of the press, assembly, association, as well as freedom of religion or belief in accordance with the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights is a welcome step. However, we urge Laos to review its declaration pertaining to Article eighteen of the I C C P R and ensure that the guarantees enshrined in the Article eighteen are applied to all citizens. Finally, we urge U N member states
United Nations Watch, you have the floor.
Madam President, the United Nations Watch is deeply concerned over the precarious human rights situation in Laos. In a country where fifty-nine percent of the population is below twenty-five years old and seventy-one percent lives in rural areas, child rights must be taken more seriously. First, with regards to education, secondary school enrollment is still lagging behind, being at seventy-eight percent. Girls from certain ethnic communities and lower wealth quintiles are at an educational disadvantage. We echo the UNESCO call in Laos to ratify the Convention against Discrimination in Education. Secondly, the issue of child labor in Laos is highly worrying. According to the I L O, hundred and seventy-eight thousand children are subjected to child labor. A majority are children from rural areas and over fifty percent of them are girls. Third, girls' youth marriage and early pregnancies are preventing girls from getting out of poverty. According to UNICEF, Laos has the highest rate of child marriage in East Asia, with thirty-seven percent of women aged twenty to forty-nine being married by the age of eighteen. Moreover, the country has one of the highest adolescent birth rates in the region, with eighty-three births per thousand girls aged between fifteen and nineteen. This number is even hundred and thirty-six per thousand in rural areas. We call on the United Nations and this Council to do its utmost to protect the fundamental rights of children in Laos through education, to be free from child labor and to save them from the plight of child marriage and predicament of early pregnancy. The young generation of Laos deserves no less. Thank you, Madam President.
I thank you. I now call Civicus.
Mr. Vice President, we know that the government of Laos P D R has accepted the majority of the recommendations it received during this U P R cycle. However, we regret that the government has not accepted several key recommendations related to fundamental freedoms and protection of human rights defenders. Following the second cycle of U P R in twenty fifteen, Laos P D R committed to reassess its restrictions on fundamental freedoms in line with the I C C P R. However, the government's actions since then stand in stark contrast to these commitments, as well as constitutional guarantees of these rights. New amendments to the Media Act introduced in twenty sixteen further consolidate the government's absolute control over the media. The government continues to criminalize criticism using unwarranted criminal defamation charges on the basis of protecting national interests. Woman human rights defender Hai Hoi Ngaz Eubori, known as Moi, was sentenced in November two thousand nineteen to five years imprisonment for a Facebook post criticizing the slow response of the government in providing assistance to communities displaced by flooding in August twenty nineteen. And the new decree number two three eight on associations introduced in November twenty seventeen grants the government broad powers to control or prohibit the formation of associations, to monitor and contain their activities and finances and to dissolve associations on arbitrary grounds without right of appeal. We call on Laos P D R to create and maintain in law and practice an enabling environment for C S O's, media, journalists and human rights defenders by appealing or reviewing all oppressive legislation in accordance with international standards. We regret the government's failure to accept key recommendations to effectively investigate the enforced disappearance of Sombat Sompho. Given the government's protracted failure to disclose any new information about the investigation since June twenty thirteen, we call on Laos to establish a new independent and impartial investigative body to determine his fate and whereabouts. We further call on the government to publicly set out a comprehensive, measurable and time-bound action plan for the implementation of U P R recommendations in full cooperation and consultation with civil society. Thank you.
I thank you. I now call the Society for Threatened Peoples.
Very much, Mr. Vice President. Society for Threatened Peoples welcomed the engagement of Laos P D R with the U P R mechanism. We regret that Laos P D R did not accept key recommendations affecting indigenous and minorities' rights. We would like to draw this Council's attention to the systematic persecution of the Humong people in Laos P D R. Facing the risk of discrimination policy, persecutions and military violence, large number of Humong community fled Laos to western countries or attempted to seek refugee in neighboring countries during the previous decades. The remaining Humong have been excluded from the Laotian society and a part of them were forced to hide in the Laotian jungle. Today, from those who flew to the jungle, only small groups such as the Chaufa in the Phoebia area are left due to an active persecution that they still suffer today. Mr. Vice President, the Humong people endure state persecution and are often victims of violent attacks and enforced disappearances. For example, since twelve March twenty twenty, two Humong minors and their accompanying adults, an eighty-years-old man and a young lady, have been missing. The group was trying to flee the severe starvation and the constant military attacks. They were last seen at the checkpoint in Pak San. Two weeks later, the car transporting the group at the time of their disappearance was found with the two dead bodies of the drivers inside bearing marks of torture. Mr. Vice President, unfortunately, this is just one of the many stories of gross human rights violations against the Humong people in Laos P D R. Nevertheless, the Laotian authorities continue to deny the existence of the issue and refuse to have any meaningful dialogue. Therefore, we take this opportunity to alert the international community of this issue and to call for an investigation of the human rights violations in the region. We also request the government of Laos P D R to do the necessary investigation to clarify the whereabouts of the missing group. I thank you, Mr. Vice.
Thank you. So that was the last speaker on our list. Before I give the floor to the delegation of the Laos People's Democratic Republic for concluding comments, allow me to note that on the basis of information received, of the two hundred and twenty-six recommendations received, I now give the floor to His Excellency, Mr. Kam in Kichthar Death, for his concluding comments. You have the floor, sir.
Mr. Vice President, Excellencies, once again, on behalf of the Laos delegation, I would like to express our sincere appreciation to all the distinguished organizations for their participation and contribution to the U P R process of the Laos P D R. I would like to sincerely thanks to all the delegation for their constructive assessment of the Laos P D R achievement in the area of human rights and for their understanding of the constraints and challenges faced by the Laos P D R in the national efforts to promote and protect human rights for the Laos people. Despite the overwhelming positive feedback, we also observed that some comments were found to be based on incorrect information and or misunderstanding of the reality situation in the Laos P D R. The Laos P D R has gained a lot of experience from this U P R undertaking through the interactive dialogues and exchange views. The U P R process provides an opportunity for the Laos P D R for move forward in our endeavor to promote and protect human rights at a national level and for further cooperation and the shared practices with the international community to advance the cause of human rights globally. Mr. Vice President, the Laos P D R as a member of the United Nations is committed itself to realizing the promotion and protection of human rights through the implementation of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, the human rights treaties to which the country is a party. As a way out to accept the U P R recommendations, the Laos P D R look forward to continuing cooperation and exchange of experiences on human rights with the international community and hopes that the international community will also continue to support our efforts, including the implementation of the U P R recommendations. In conclusion, on behalf of the Laos delegation, I would like to express my deep appreciation to you, Mr. Vice President, for your admirable leadership and guiding the humanitarian culture a great success. I would like to express my sincere gratitude to all distinguished delegates for their kind presence and contribution. My sincere thanks also go to the Office of the High Commissioner for Human Rights, the Troika Indonesia, Italy and Democratic Republic of Congo, the U P R secretariat interpreters and all the people who have facilitated the session successfully today. I thank you, Mr. Vice President, for your kind attention.
Merci.
I thank you, Your Excellency. Thank you for your presentation and for your constructive participation on behalf of the Laos People's Democratic Republic in the U P R process. I suggest that the Council now adopts the decision on the outcome document of the universal periodic review of the Laos People's Democratic Republic as it appears on the screen. I see no objection. The decision is adopted. Thank you.